There are other questions on that one? The other one is recreational vehicles and trailers. So, for the first thing we did, we've actually...
Could you go back, sorry?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a regulated day that businesses get picked up on? What I'm thinking of is, take that. If everybody negotiates their own contract, how do you know whose garbage container is what? So, how would you... How would Larry enforce it?
Right, we would... That's a great question. We'd have to find out what the day is. I believe it's Thursday right now for...
But we do have a consistent day for downtown?
Oh, yeah. For the...
For the businesses.
Unless they chose the contract with someone different, which they could.
Okay.
But it's consistent as long as they stay with their current company.
Okay.
Uh, the next one... So, recreational vehicles and trailers. The way the ordinance is right now, it doesn't define recreational vehicles in a way that's consistent with the state statute. It just kind of lists a bunch of different... It lists camping trailers, fifth-wheel trailers, motor homes, travel trailers, truck campers. It lists them all in this kind of litany. And it's hard... So, that was one thing that's not very clear. So, we thought, let's define it as the state statute defines a recreational vehicle. And then, secondly, right now, there's an issue, and Larry especially sees it in the field, where you... Right now, you can park a motor home or recreational vehicle on the street in a neighborhood, residential neighborhood, as big as you want.
Can you not also now park that on a commercial street? I wasn't able to find any code that says you couldn't park an RV in front of Ripley Gardens.
That's right.
So, when you write this code, do you really mean to only limit it in residential? Or wouldn't you also want to have some way to control it on commercial streets as well?
Potentially, as we just haven't seen it being an issue on...
No, I know. I'm just...
Yeah.
...for thought.
Sure. I mean, that's something that...
Might be something we want to write in there.
Yep. It could be... That could be a... Something to look at as well, yep. So, what this... You're right. What this would do is specifically for the residential areas. And it would also incorporate trailers. There's a situation right now where in, I believe it's the Oaks, where there's a... Believe it or not, there's actually a car transport trailer that falls just below the threshold of a commercial vehicle when it's disconnected from the truck because it's no longer 10,000 pounds, which is what the UDO requires. So, the loophole is just disconnect it, and you can have it there on the street. So, that's something we've seen in, again, the residential areas as being a concern, so... But... I believe that's all.
So, the 12 hours that allows for moving trucks and things like that, which is where that's coming from?
Right. Delivery, routine, anything. And this doesn't preclude someone from being able to have a recreational vehicle. The code does allow for you to have a recreational vehicle on your private property. So, that this is...
On your driveway or on your lot somewhere.
Right. Yep. You just can't live in it, which we also have some concerns that arise from time to time. The proposed effective dates would begin a little bit more than a month out so that there'd be time for notification, education. Are there any questions on those?
So, a couple of questions. So, 50, 75, 100. That seems cheaper. Why wouldn't I just take the ticket and leave it there? Because I know if the town rule is 50 bucks... I know what it costs to get it removed out of our neighborhood parking lot. You're going to pay 300 bucks. So, the risk there, okay, we will abide by the rule. We've seen an uptick in communities where there's enough discretionary money in their pocket that 50 dollars... I don't need to clean the clubhouse. We'll just let you keep my deposit. And I'm a little bit worried that that... 50, 75, 100, that combined over the course of a year isn't as much as one towing. So, that's why I'm...
Yeah.
I'd like you to understand what you're thinking... Thinking is there.
So, I can confirm... Just, this is an existing fine. It's using section... It's Section 1099 out of the existing code, so I could look it up pretty quickly here. But I believe after that $100, each day is a new violation. So, it actually becomes $100 a day after you hit those three. So, it's... That would actually add up to a more significant amount. But I'd have to confirm that.
Okay.
Does it make a big difference?
Then, the other, I'm curious as to what the board feels in terms of, do you feel it should be extended to all streets? And since it was brought up, and then contrast that, what's the risk with that? So, I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that. You can wait and hear what the rest of the board feels first, Kurt, because you... Thoughts, anything?
I think the point raised was very good. And I think it should include all streets.
Okay. Okay. Do you have another perspective from another town that...
No, no. I was just... I'm just... I'm also just trying to think of why they should be allowed on other streets. Yeah, and I don't really have... Don't see... I don't see why prohibiting them on the other streets would be problematic, so...
Good. Any other questions for Kurt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hubert? Potential small transportation improvement projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
And I just want to just do a little preamble here and compliment Mr. Hubert for the great job he did stepping in for Mr. Rory on a very tough project, the Great Crossing from Collins Road down to Helms Road. We had 21 days to turn that around, and in the middle of that, Dennis was leaving, and Matt had to take that on, work with South Carolina DOT, the Rail Division, Union County, Mineral Springs, and Waxaw. And I just compliment you on the job well done. And it was reinforced at the CRTPO meeting when the chairman paused the meeting and complimented on the collaboration that was shown. So, thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, today, I want to talk about maybe the first fruit of our labor in realizing the funding we've gotten from the vehicle fee. I want to talk about the top three items we might be able to realize to start out that process. So, in the recent survey we had of town residents, traffic transportation issues were identified as a major concern for residents. In order to address that concern, we acted the vehicle fee, and we funded $300,000 a year toward the kinds of projects that normally the state doesn't see on their radar. And this... These funds wouldn't encumber the funds that we use for our ongoing annual street maintenance. So, with this in mind, we compiled a short list of three out of 10 that we considered initially to bring forward for review and discussion. Those top three, in the order of priority as I see them, are the installation of a less-turn lane on Kensington Drive and Morehouse Drive, the intersection realignment at Pine Oak Road and Waxaw Marvin Road, and then finally, the Howie Mine sidewalk replacement or upgrade. So, as we go into more detail on each of those alternatives, the Kensington Drive turn lane is really to help see the vision of that east-west connector value to increase the capacity of that corridor. Estimated cost is about $250,000, just a rough beginning estimate. The benefits of that, it does address a town-maintained street. It is bordered by two developments, we believe, are receptive to right-of-way requests that typically slow down or add increased cost to projects we're seeing, that being Quelland and Lindsay Meadows. The design initially was already completed as part of the overall Kensington Drive improvement project, which had to be shelved because of cost and the bridge being too low to really do anything about. And additionally, it has potential to be completed in some arrangement in conjunction with Lindsay Meadows' construction when they do their turn lane. Maybe we use their contractor as well and just do a payment and try and get some efficiency, and certainly, we don't interrupt that area for two different projects. Basically, the con is it's localized only to that one part of town. I don't know that all the rest really avoid that condition, but certainly, that's something to be taken into account. So, if we look at it...
But it's also a road that traffic count at times rivals 16 as well, correct?
Absolutely. If you're talking about future volumes versus other areas of town, this is certainly an item where we're going to see increased traffic, absolutely. And just a picture of it now, there is a right-turn lane in coming westbound, but there is no left turn, so right now, traffic would stack up behind anybody trying to turn in if they don't have that opportunity. Again, this is just an excerpt of the plan sheet from the original Kensington Drive that shows the amount of due diligence. It's already been done. We would just have to do additional design to make it coincide with the Lindsay Meadows' lane improvements out there are the only additional design costs that should be encumbered. So, then, if we move on to alternative two, which is Pine Oak/Waxaw Marvin intersection, it's to eliminate the poor angle of approach that those streets currently have to improve the safety specifically, get it up to current design standards. Estimated cost is 175. I think that number's probably low based on some of the numbers we're currently getting. I would say, for comparison purposes, just assume these projects are all more or less about the same cost, and we'll certainly be able to have more detailed information as we put more time into the planning. Again, pros for this one, it's because of the angle that you have, it's a safety concern. And DOT, even though it's two DOT roads, they're not really going to see it on their radar until there is a crash with injury or, heaven forbid, a fatality. So, this is trying to get out in front of those kinds of conditions because we can tell the future need is to have a standard intersection there. Again, another reason is cost of right-of-way acquisitions are always going to be lowest at the present time. And then, if that's identified as good commercial property, if something gets developed before we can get there, we might not... It might not be feasible on cost at all. Cons, again, we'd be using these funds on state-maintained streets, which is not ideal, but under the circumstances, it might be warranted. And then, timing, we're in the middle or at the end of the Waxaw Marvin corridor study, so this information has not really been taken into account in that study. So, there might be some information that comes out of that that helps inform this one as well. And then, here, just a quick rundown of the existing condition where the intersection, you have to... You just have bad site distance, and you're kind of taking a chance, certainly at night. It's very concerned, disconcerting when you want to be this person pulling out into Waxaw Marvin, and it's only going to get worse as these traffic volumes increase. Again, what they would do is they would probably have to get most of this parcel and put a connection straight across that has better 90-degree angle approaches to each, and then connect in Sunbonnet Lane to then join up over here and just eliminate that altogether. The third alternative is the Howie Mine sidewalk upgrade, specifically to address the poor condition and functionality, the safety of the current sidewalk, which serves the residents, and it also is a hazard to the vehicle traffic because there's no gutter. It's just a sharp edge at the... Where the sidewalk begins and pavement ends. And this would be specifically between North Providence and Curriton Street. Estimated cost, based on previous efforts to have this work done, is 300,000. Benefits, it addresses a safety issue that affects both the pedestrians and the vehicles. We receive numerous complaints throughout any year on both sides of this, whether you're walking it or whether you're driving it. It does serve an area of town where development's really not an option to help mitigate this condition where we would think someone could come in and help kind of do these as a part of their development. We don't see that on the horizon. Again, we've tried to secure grants to help facilitate this project, and it has not qualified, and currently, we're not aware that it will qualify in the near future unless some new grants that have different parameters come up on the horizon.
Was this the sidewalk from the CDBG grant last year that...
Right, right. We did a survey study, and we had to do a survey of levels of income, and we just couldn't get any response in any way that helped kind of provide that documentation for us.
Can you explain that a little bit more to me, please?
Yeah. Responses or... Yeah, it's difficult because there are parameters. You can't really tell them exactly what the survey is about. You just kind of, on good faith, are kind of asking, would you mind answering some questions? And the questions are specifically related to income, and so, it's not set up for success the way you have to go through it. We did everything we could in terms of getting information out to the community to the degree we're permitted. I think Kurt even went door-to-door in some situations to try and facilitate that process, and we still could not provide the numbers that needed to meet the goals of the grant.
So, without that data, you couldn't...
Right. Without being able to support that, it really fell below their ability to provide that.
Okay. Sad.
And the cons here, again, it's using town funds to improve a state-maintained road, but traditionally, DOT doesn't really do sidewalk projects as a matter of course. So, I wouldn't really expect that they'd come in anytime soon and do that anyway. So, that kind of washes.
Unless they were doing the whole road.
Right, right. If they came in and redid the corridor, if there was a need, but I don't think the numbers...
That's not going to happen for long.
Right. So, here are just a couple of examples of the existing conditions where some areas, the sidewalk is just sunken and cracked. Some areas, it's been paved over so much, there's not really a good delineation between the road and the sidewalk. Some areas, there's... And I can't even explain why, it's almost 11 inches of sidewalk in some areas. None of those are ideal. It puts pedestrians very close to the road. There's no gutter, and I think those are all easily identifiable. And then, this last one kind of shows where we've added a section of sidewalk beyond this area, and you can see the difference it makes in safety and just the aesthetics of it all. And so, I think you can also see the benefits we could gain if we selected this project. Again, my recommendation, or the staff's that is, is that we begin with Kensington Drive, and generally, that's because of the timing involved. I think we can realize the savings with trying to partner with Lindsay Meadows in trying to get this done. Should there be, we find out that there are more funds available, and we cost this out and realize any savings with any of the projects, we'd certainly come back to you guys and talk about options moving forward in this year and/or future years.
Can I ask you, when... You said the Waxaw Marvin corridor study is coming back soon? When...
Yeah. It's supposed to be done by August was the original date, and I think we are on target for that. So, very shortly, we should get some level of information that might help guide this.
Thank you.
So, currently, there's... I guess it's repaving on Pine Oak right now?
I know they were going to do shoulder work.
Shoulder work?
Reconstruction, basically, on a section over Waxaw Marvin Road.
But there was... There's no way to really tie in with the project? Because that's an NCDOT project, right? But there was no way for us to tie this Pine Oak project?
Right. That was a... That's just a standard maintenance funding that they're using, and they've never expressed to us any future desire to do anything related to that intersection at this time.
And we certainly didn't want, in any way, to slow that down because that work needed to be done. So, it'll be beneficial, and so, anything that they do to the far end of Pine Oak can be used as that service drive for future house connections. So, it really won't be... There'll be some small section that would go away ultimately, but that would occur anyway, so...
My personal preference would be to start at Pine Oak because of the safety issues, the fact that you could have cars crashing into cars. However, there are a couple qualifiers that I'd like to ask you about. When I drive through there, not only is it the angle at which the roads intersect, but is the height of the road. Are you planning to reduce that hump in Waxaw Marvin to add to the site distance?
Right. That would have to certainly be part of the process when the design, they're going to take into account site distance on both approaches. And if there is... If it doesn't meet current standards, then they will have to be accounted for in the costs as well as the design to make sure it meets the standards we now have.
How long do you think it would take you to get plans for that intersection improvement done to where you could get going on it?
Yeah. In this market, it's probably longer than normal, just because it's so hot trying to get somebody right out of the gate. But, again, probably six months to a year to get the survey done, get plans initiated, and then, you know, we got to go hand-in-hand with DOT, so that drags it out. But certainly, within a year, we should see something that...
So, basically, by the time you're ready, we'll be into the next budget cycle?
Likely, likely, because we're so green on this one.
So, if you just put it in a practical sense, you can't get to this intersection at Pine Oak Road before the next budget cycle anyway?
Probably not. We would encumber, you know, just the design and possibly right-of-way acquisition costs, and then move on to a different year for the actual construction costs.
I think the key thing Matt just said was if there would be an ability to have enough preliminary design to have some right-of-way conversation, then that might be a fruitful approach. But because we know property that will be impacted, so that might be an opportunity if we have some additional dollars in this year to move that part of it forward.
Right.
But I think from what the practical standpoint, the number-one project is the ripest, and I'll use that term, and the number-two project is probably the second most. And then, they go in that order as far as project delivery. I think the last one that Matt mentioned is a sidewalk. Again, you're talking about multiple properties with right-of-way acquisition or right-of-way donation or right-of-way impact. So, the one that's easiest in a lot of ways is the one that deals with the fewest property owners. And so, with Quelland and with Lindsay Meadows, hopefully, that process would be a little bit quicker and a little bit smoother than having to interact with multiple properties that might not be crazy about the projects.
Well, and there's a lot of piece parts coming together on Kensington as well.
Right.
Over the next couple of months, which...
The other part of it, in my mind, I would put Howie Mine as the second one from a safety issue. But again, there's some qualifiers, and with the recent success with CRTPO, CSX, NCDOT, South Carolina, et cetera, it sounds like you're probably qualified to go ahead and take on the people that live along Howie Mine Road and see if we can do better with a grant approach as part of the strategy toward getting that done.
I can tell you from an NCDOT standpoint, there's no grant eligibility coming up for two years. We're in the two-year scoring period right now, and so, that process will start next fall for grants to be awarded in... What year are we in? 2018, 2020? That's just... They go on a two-year cycle. I mean, as an example, we... And I'll... I'm going to update later on this evening. We're on the... We may be on the receiving end of a grant that started in 2017, and it's 2018. It actually started in 2016, and that's just coming to an end. There's a lot of course correction going on because the federal government just passed a revised budget, and so, now they're moving money around from funds to make sure we don't lose money as well. So, the focus is not on initiating new grants as much as it is trying to make sure that what we have gets allocated properly in the right bucket so we don't lose it.
And I would add, we're kind of learning, just through the first two we're administering now, that the cost of grants are expensive. We pay money to get that money, and if you're talking under a half million dollars, maybe even more, it's almost worth it to find a different way because the requirements for right-of-way acquisition, the higher standard of care to meet federal guidelines, the cost of construction because the reporting is so encumbrance to the contractor, everything gets inflated to where it almost... And costs in time and money, we're finding it's really not worth it in the... For these smaller type projects.
When Dennis presented 10 projects a couple months ago, how did you come up with these three? Was it based on the most shovel-ready, the most...
Yeah, I think...
Safety issues?
It was a kind of a higher-level comparison. A lot of those projects were specifically DOT, and it just seemed not in our interest to spend our money specifically on DOT's rights-of-way. A lot of those are subject to having development kind of help facilitate those improvements as well. And then, certainly, the ones associated with safety were brought to the forefront, and then, the timeliness specifically to Kensington was a real factor in where it fell out in the scheme of those.
And additionally, what I would say is that the board certainly needs to have a discussion about those top 10 at some point. But what we wanted to do really is jumpstart that planning process and that delivery process with one or more projects to get something going and not spend a lot of time trying to get to a final 10 or 12 list, but let's pick something and get going on it. So, that's kind of my charge to our engineering staff is let's look at what is most practical to deliver that does have safety benefits, that does have congestion mitigation, that we can get going and show some progress on and have a high success rate and good delivery. We are wanting to have that broader discussion with the board to say, are there any other projects that are in addition to the 10 that were talked about that we need to add to that list? Is there one of the 10 that you want to take off the list and say, we're not interested in doing that? That's a discussion we really do need to have. But we wanted to go ahead and get this to you today. We're in the first month of the year. We wanted to show some progress and get going on it and get one underway.
I think we also need to make sure we're cognizant of whether we decide to do one or two or three or none or any of these. If we pick a DOT road, we set a precedent towards DOT that if they ignore us long enough, we'll take care of it. I mean, we could be setting that precedent in some minds. So, we have to be cognizant if that's a risk we're willing to take rather than trying, again, to leverage them for some more money on their own roads. Just, it's something to consider in your calculations.
One thing, Matt, that may help, not today, you know, sometime in the future, I think it would help if you came back and explained to the full board the difference between maintenance funding, spot safety, because some of these things just come up and, you know, Pine Oak, that's a maintained road. That doesn't go on the project list. It would never come remotely close to qualifying for a project on the regional transportation just because of everything above it and how they score because that's data-driven. Likewise, Kensington would never make it, but it did qualify for the funding based upon the hard work you guys did to get that recognized as a critical road from a state and a federal point of view in terms of connecting 521 and up. I mean, as they presented last week, it's Newtown, 75, and Kensington. Those are your connector roads now. That's the new picture of the region, which, in my mind, raises my antenna to, okay, what are we doing there and how do we progress that? Because that is... I mean, if they're recognizing and willing to give us some funds because of that, that raises the bar, or not the bar, but raises the attention on that significantly. And then, we're going to vote later on on what's going to happen with that intersection tonight. So, a lot of activity going on there.
Sure. And that's certainly something we can do because the way DOT does things is very confusing. They have a... confusing. They have a lot of layers, and so we can certainly take a look at that and try and break it down for you in the future.
And with, and, and I'm not being critical of anybody with, with what happened with the three roundabouts now down to the two roundabouts, and nobody knows what the heck's going on out there and how it happened. I think clearing the air and just letting us, helping us understand it would be, would be helpful. Greg, I think you said...
To Commissioner Lee's point, I, I think it is an important thing to discuss and have a philosophy of is the town willing to make investment on state roads? There has been a major change in North Carolina as far as the way the DOT approaches town investment. And there used to be, and I, I remember sitting in the Secretary of Transportation's office one time, and, and he said, "You can't buy a project." And that was because the Secretary of Transportation was from the eastern part of the state. And so the philosophy back, back then was Charlotte area communities that are wealthy can't buy projects. And so that was the mindset that they had. And understandably, that, it could be a philosophy. The shift in the administrations over the years became now projects are data-driven. Scoring is data-driven, and one of the reasons that we score well sometimes is if we bring additional dollars to the table. So there is now an acknowledgement that we're looking for partners. That discussion is happening at the federal level. I don't know how much, um, everybody watches that, but the, the infrastructure investment, when you listen to what's actually being said, is we'll put a couple of dollars on the table and we want the locals to put four dollars on the table. So that's the, the thought process at the federal level. But the state level is generally interested in finding partners and leveraging dollars. And so that is a healthy, good discussion for the town board to have is what is your philosophy as, as far as infrastructure investment? To, to elaborate a little bit more, the problems are mainly, let me restate that, the big problems are mainly on state roads. We, we do have problems without a doubt on town roads that we need to address, but the ones that impact the most traffic on a daily basis, with the exception of Kensington, which we own, are going to be on those state roads. The, the, the point I would make too about the Waxahau Marvin Road, from a timing standpoint, we're going to get the study back, and it's going to be in this window over the next couple of months, and then we'll be able to better have that information to, to look at that topography issue, which is pretty bad. I was there today and just noticed it again, that as you're turning left, if you head southbound on Waxahau Marvin and you turn left on Pine Oak, there's a hill and a dip. And if you don't see a car coming at 55, it could be an issue. So it is really, it is a safety hazard. And so I'll be interested to see what the Waxahau Marvin Study comes back and recommends there. There's a possibility they might come up with some sort of other idea other than just the button hook that we're thinking about. But that other idea would most likely be more expensive if it was something else.
Is there, is there any data on, from the police department, of incidents at that intersection or on Howie Mine sidewalks?
Yeah, I'm not aware that there is.
Okay.
That's what I was going to ask. My concern is, I travel that road all the time, and it's, I think there was a wreck this weekend. Friday or Saturday, there was a pretty bad accident there. So there's no crash data as far as the town or the police department of how many we've had there. I see a lot of near misses there quite often.
Right. Okay. And certainly something I could follow up on.
Well, I just want to clarify with Chief. I think both town police department and the county have gotten very rigorous in making sure that they enter the crash data and the location, and that does get picked up by DOT if it's a DOT road.
Interesting to see those numbers.
Thank you.
I think the other scary part about Pine Oak and Waxahau Marvin, Saturday and Sunday with the bikers, with that dip, you can't see, see them at all. And usually there's somebody driving in the opposite lane trying to pass the bikers, so you're, you don't know where the heck you're going to go sometimes. That gets a little scary there, so. Any other questions for Matt? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to do a couple of work plan presentations by some boards and committees. First up, Kelly. And I want to preface this by saying that, uh, the town board has, is in the process of building out a, a series of work sessions so we can get a lot of work done. And first up, when we take the boards and committees, we're going to be discussing as a whole all the work plans and, and the like. So what feedback you don't get today, just wait a week or two, you'll get a lot more, okay?
Very good.
So we thank you for making time to join us today.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kelly Ling Ramirez, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. All right, I'm going to review our four main goals for our work plan this year. The first being the facade improvement program, which is probably one that you're most familiar with. The goal of that program is economic development, and the grants are to encourage investment of repair and maintenance of the downtown commercial buildings as well as private residences. And we are focusing on a historic period of significance of 1888 through 1941. The two main reasons why we feel this grant is important is that, one, historic buildings are often rather expensive to keep up, more so than newer buildings. It could be due to the historic character of it and, and different structures or the type of material that's used, et cetera. And then secondly, our promotion of being able to help property owners preserve that historic character of their buildings is to really preserve the unique character of downtown Waxahau. So we feel that's very near and dear to our heart, that particular unique character that draws people to Waxahau. So throughout the year, there is always an annual workshop to educate the public on the facade improvement program, to discuss what the grants, you know, can cover in the process itself. Also, we go through and update and refine that grant application process annually along with the Board of Commissioners. And we also assist the applicants from beginning to end if needed, or particularly if they're running across some construction snafus and we want to make sure everything's keeping with what was approved in the grant application. As well as often, probably more often, it's a timeline issue. As everyone knows, if they don't any home or building improvements, things can get delayed unforeseen, you know, issues that come up. So we work with them with extensions or whatnot to keep everything in compliance. Goal two is our oral history project, and that started just a few years ago in 2015. The intent is to have it be an ongoing project, and we hope to have, begin really quite a collection of videotaped histories, different residents, you know, accounting their memories and stories of families, friends, neighbors, just events that have happened in the town. We'd like to get those recorded. And so this year, our goal is to have four of those oral histories recorded. That's not so easy to do, so we do plan to reach out to residents and make that interview process as user-friendly or comfortable as possible. So we try to understand what might make them more comfortable in giving a, a recording of that account. And then, once those videos are recorded, we will publicly have those available on the town's YouTube channel. Goals three and four. Number three relates to public education outreach and social media. So throughout the year, the commission will contribute either information or written articles to Town Communications, the Village News, and Tri-W publication. We will also establish a social media presence and update the Historic Preservation Commission's page on the town website, as well as participate in any community festivals, events, and try to give out, just educate the public on historic preservation in general and our commission specifically. Goal number four is the historic landmark designation, and we will pursue landmark designation for historic buildings and structures that are within the National Historic District in Waxahau. We will also help educate and assist those historic property owners as they go through the designation process or try to maintain status. And lastly, we have a few other business items that we take care of throughout the year. We do review and consider the certificates of appropriateness of those local landmarks to ensure that work done on the designated landmark is appropriate to the special character of the landmark. So we're really focusing on that special character. We also have training for Historic Preservation Commission members. We do that through workshops, field trips, possibly joint trainings with Main Street Committee or other committees where it's relevant and we have crossover. And then lastly, we go through and update any of our working documents. That could include the rules and procedures, historic landmark guidelines, facade improvement program application, and various brochures or information to make sure that's current and accurate. So, any questions or feedback at this time?
I have questions.
Sure.
Um, what exactly does the historic landmark designation do? Is it just, just to put a plaque so that people know the history, or is there any protection of that property for the future or...?
There is protection in that it also, and I am not the expert on that exactly, so I apologize. But there is some significance to having that designated. And then obviously, anything done to would have to go through the certificate of appropriateness. So it's just kind of a protection to keep the integrity of its historic value in place or what was listed in the application to get that designation. So there may be someone else on staff that can answer that better.
My understanding is they do the validation, but the, but the restrictions on, on the property itself would have to be done in agreement with the homeowner via the deed or some extra covenants that are, that are added to it. The Historic Preservation Committee can't arbitrarily put covenants on property without that being worked through at the deed level.
I actually have a question for you, Steve. You listed this, that you review or, or update your rules and procedures. Wouldn't that be this board's job to do the lower committee's rules and procedures?
So what each committee does is they update it, and then, and that's something we'll discuss when we get together, but then they give us what they recommend as changes and then we bring them all together.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So as a, for instance, just, and thank you for doing this, they asked for some advice and counsel on closed session.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and, and so now you're going to put that in, in your procedure that it's not, it's not allowed, but we gave them the, the guidance on that, so.
Very good.
And thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that being on record. Just to do a reminder, we had done a reminder before, but just to make sure everyone felt good and it was on the same page, so.
Did we accomplish the feel-good or did we just accomplish the communication, so?
We've got a meeting in a couple of weeks, so we'll go over that very well, yes.
Did you have more questions?
I mean, I don't know if she's able to answer at this time. I just, I, I feel like I need more education on just historic preservation. There's a lot of misinformation out there, so I didn't know if your committee is able to address that, you know, how would, do we protect things? Is, is it necessary to put any kind of protection on anything, that type of, that's kind of what I'm more interested in.
Sure. I mean, I don't know if you have a specific recommendation, but we'd be happy to come to some, a meeting or give a presentation or...
So why don't we take that up next week when we meet as a board as to what we would want to do? Because there's an opportunity maybe to educate us, but more importantly, as importantly, educate the community at the same time, and so we could maybe host a session and promote it, et cetera.
And that would be good. It seems that there's always an ongoing need between property owners or just the community in general to know, you know, who has authority, who can say what you can and can't do, and a lot of those questions, understandably. So I think that would be good dialogue.
Right, right.
As well as, you know, what are the benefits of historic preservation or, you know, how do you preserve that but at another risk, and weighing all of the benefits, you know, pros and cons to the community, so.
That would be great.
That would be great.
Okay.
And I'll direct this towards Greg, I think. I'm assuming their social media presence would kind of be coordinated through staff?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I assume, and I'll make sure that our lead on that, Daniel and Leslie, follow up. Okay. Very good.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much.
And stay tuned.
Yes, thank you.
Next up, Ken, Main Street. How are you today, sir?
Doing well, Steve. How are you?
Good.
So first of all, guys, I would like to introduce myself. If you don't know who I am, that's okay too. But my name is Ken Posco. I am a small business owner, provisions Waxahau right on Main Street. I'm also a Navy veteran, a member of, I'm a VFW life member, and I'm also a volunteer firefighter for the town of Waxahau. Have four kids and do a little other, a couple other things as well. So I just kind of wanted to come today and show you guys what we're working towards from the 2018, 2019 work plan project. There are just, there's a few open-ended items that we're still working towards, but let's get, and jump right on this. One of the biggest things I think that we need to really recognize is that we have, we are a recipient of the great Main Street Award for, in the state of North Carolina. It came down out of 64 different Main Streets, and only two were awarded, and we were one of them. So that, so this is actually quite a large accomplishment for us. The Main Street Advisory Board, we cannot do it alone. You know, we did it with our businesses and reaching out and just proper channels, working with other folks to get this recognition. This is something that we're actually going to throw together and try to get this out there as well to let people know that, you know, it doesn't do us any good if we already know it, but no one else does.
So in an effort to throw it together, using your words, we are having an announcement August 3rd or a promotion at Jamming at the Tracks at 6:45, and so there will be a whole campaign to make the town aware to come down and see it, and someone from the state is coming down to actually present the award, so.
Great. Thank you. So what we want to do is that Main Street, from an economic and historic preservation context, is kind of what we are doing to improve the Main Street flow of business while keeping its unique characteristic. And in order to, for us to obtain that, we're working from a four-point approach. The organization is, you know, building the human and, and the financial resources through the public and private partnerships to achieve a common vision. The promotion, the design, and the economic restructuring, strengthening existing economic assets, expanding and diversifying the economic base. So as we are working with this four-pronged approach, this is what, in order to be part of the Main Street organization from the state, we have to use their four-pronged approach. So as of right now, the downtown impact, we have 103 businesses. We have 152 full-time jobs. Forty, 45% of that is the restaurants that are located in downtown Waxahau, and then the other, some 49% is the physical Waxahau businesses that are located downtown as well. That's a 13% gain from 2015 to 2018, and this study was the results from January study. So there was another one done this past June. We're waiting for all the numbers to come in, and we'll be able to have more accurate numbers as well. As far as the number of full-time jobs, net gain is 25 from the 2015, 2018, and that's in consideration with all of the new constructions such as with the Mill, Emmett's, Mary O'Neill's, you know, things like that, different restaurants, different businesses coming in. The rebranding of the barbecue restaurant also brought, you know, new life to that side of the tracks as well. So these are just the Main Street kind of boundaries. This is the, where we work, kind of like our, our thought process. So it, it's kind of interesting because you see that it does reach down in many different areas, many different neighborhoods, and also, you know, it's finding, you know, a lot of different demographics as well here. So the development according to the North Carolina Main Street requirements is the economic visionary statement, the four-pronged approach, and then the three economic development strategies based on the vision statement, which we'll get to at the very end of this presentation. It just kind of shows you just the four-pronged approach or an example thereof. So the economic vision statement, you guys I'm sure had an opportunity to read this, but downtown Waxahow is Union County's hub for diverse retail shops, award-winning dining establishments, local artisans, cultural, cultural events. Its pedestrian-friendly streets and beautifully preserved historic character provides residents and visitors alike with a sense of heritage, activities, and well-being. So me, myself, my wife as business owners, we actually hear this all the time. We always hear how, you know, Main Street, the downtown area, it really, it looks like it hasn't changed in history. And a lot of folks, especially the new people that are moving into town every single day, they're like, wow, they didn't know it was here, and it's, you know, just right out their front door. And I think it, it really just adds to it that, you know, as we're going and we're building and more people coming in with the social media aspect, that we're letting people know about it as well. So strategy one is to create a network of pedestrian-friendly streets. So we are going to, we're analyzing and updating the parking counts, because parking is always an issue for downtown businesses, and also just people in general, so.
I would suspect that that has changed significantly since the original study in 2016.
Yes, it has. So we're also working on this study as well, to get an update. Conduct a walk, a walk audit in downtown to identify beautification opportunities. This goes from our light posts to our trashcans, to, you know, some of the fencing that is around Niven Price Building, to right there on the corner of Main Street where it also, you know, just to make things look a little bit better, to make it more eye appealing. And to continue promoting the TAP brand and serving the downtown stakeholder group for the project. So we are working right now, the design phase is 65% complete. Final design will be done in several, in a couple months. And then we go into the next stage, which is going to be seeking construction bids. And with that being said, that we do have a timeline, hopefully by spring, early summer that the construction will start. We had the deadline put in here for 2021 for completion, because what a lot of folks may not understand is that if we do not complete it by that time, we actually lose the TAP grant and all of its funding behind it. So the entire project has to be completed by that timeframe, so.
Yeah, perhaps at a future meeting, not you, but maybe Kurt could come and, and update us, they, they moved the funding around. And so, but that shouldn't have impacted the, the project, but at one point in time, a year ago, we said construction in 2018, then early 2019, I think to the community saying a completion in 2021, that's a head-scratcher, and I think we need to kind of put the expectation of what's really getting done there, so people are aware. I get the funding aspect, other, if everything isn't done, completed, dotted, everything, crossed, you name it, yeah, then we don't get the money. But I'm guessing that we'll have a lot of work done before then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ken's committing for everybody. This is good, I like.
Absolutely, I'll jump, I'll jump in and manage it if I need to. So in the next slide, you can see just a few of the improvements we're looking forward to. The big thing is addition of sidewalks and crosswalks. Right now, as it stands, we're gonna, we're looking to put in sidewalks that are gonna be up on, by the railroad tracks, so that people can actually walk on that side of the street. Adding handicap spots for handicap parking that will be actually properly used instead of in a bad spot where handicap personnel cannot commit to that as well. One of the biggest things is on the east Broom Street, North Broom Street, we're looking to bump that sidewalk out and make that into a one-lane road, which will definitely cut down on the congestion right there at the intersection, and also just allow that more of a thoroughfare for people to walk, to dine, to listen to music, things of that nature, So we're looking to, strategy number two is to foster a diverse mix of retail, eating, and drinking establishments. We're gonna spearhead a creation of regular downtown merchant meetings. We had our second one, which was yesterday. So the first meeting, we attracted 16 businesses in attendance, which was great. We weren't sure how many people were gonna show up, who was gonna show up, what kind of activity that we would have. Yesterday's meeting unfortunately only showed 10 people and 10 businesses. We like to think that was because of the, of it being weather-related, because with the storm, obviously people, they don't come out that much. But what that does, what we're doing with this is it allows businesses to communicate with each other, express interest, and then kind of take it from there. It's, you know, and there is actually one of us from the board that does attend these meetings, certainly not to be a, an official representative of that, but to just kind of take in what our businesses are saying around us. So serve as a downtown stakeholder during review of the town-owned real estate, to include collaborations with the Park and Rec Advisory Board, review the original waterfall proposal in the corner lot. I'm sure you guys know, there's a lot of people who think that we're actually putting in a waterfall. However, it is not. So this is just part of the town-owned property. If you see here, one of the biggest things that we're working towards, and also with the TAP grant, is from that corner lot that we have, is to kind of make a big loop. So we have a starting point, and the ending point is in the same exact location, if you're coming from the south side. So we're looking to keep that as far as the Niven Price Building, the parking lot, for access to, stay in that loop as well. These are just rough examples of some town, towns that actually have the drawings already done. We do not have any architectural plans as of yet, but we're looking to make that corner lot a centerpiece for events, okay? Whether it is a concert, whether we move the farmer's market down there, whether, you know, at the time that we do a chef demonstration, which I'm all about, of course. But basically to make people like, when they see it, they're, they're excited about it, not have things hidden away, such as like, you know, farmer's market, for instance. If you don't know where, exactly where it is, it's very hard to find it.
I think your main point, correct me if I'm wrong, is we need to take advantage of that corner lot to promote downtown, it's sitting, sitting idle.
You're saying it so much better than me, but yes, sir.
That's the challenge that you're putting towards us, that you'd like some help on to at least get the ball rolling.
Yes, sir.
Because it's just an empty lot.
Correct.
Let me ask you a question, totally unrelated to this. Would it help if you had a consistent board member come into your meetings?
Absolutely. Absolutely, just.
You've got a lot of information here that it's, you know, it's hard, and we'll digest it again next week when we get together, but.
Sure. Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, just for, just communication. I think it's very big and very important with us moving forward, with so many project and, projects and ideas that we have in ear to listen to, and also to get some feedback as well.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take you off track. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I don't have a track, Steve, thank you though. Strategy three, to foster a cultural events, local artisans, and historic preservation context. Support, support Waxahow events through development sponsorship with its vendors, improving event strategies. Connect businesses with grant opportunities for, such as facade grants and other items as well, with historic tax credits, facade grants, and the appropriate designs as well. Because a lot of folks have ideas of what they want to do, but they can't do it because of the location of their business and their building. So they have to, you know, get positive reinforcement from us to let them know that, hey, we stand behind you in your want, in your need to improve the, your business, but this is what you have, these are the guidelines in which you have to follow. This is a, just a, the template for our four points, this is an example. So the strategy one is, again, to create a network of pedestrian-friendly streets. That's, this is just, like I said, just an example. We have this available, I'm sure you guys have already seen it. But talking about the TAP grant, the organization, the promotion design, and then the economic vitality of it, and it breaks it down. So this is what we work towards every month. You know, obviously having a starting, middle, and end, and then this is where we go, and then we just kind of build on this, and we make changes as we go. And this is just a great picture of our Kaleidoscope Festival, you know, with the food trucks, everybody sitting down family-style, you know, just eating, and just kind of, this is kind of where we, we've always been. We've always been a family, we've always been a group of folks that have a great hospitality, and, you know, just, we want to build on that.
Other questions for Ken?
Can you explain the waterfall thing a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So the name waterfall actually came from, I believe it was, not Stanley, maybe Stanley County, but it's, the waterfall approach and the thought is a center point of the downtown area. And what it's going to do is, some, some folks have, you know, art scapes, larger points such as, I was down at Rock Hill for a food truck Friday, and they have a very nice waterfall there, which is just kind of like a, a center area for entertaining and gathering. But we're, our idea is to build upon that and have it work all the way around the downtown area, and not just one central location, so all businesses can take advantage of that.
One that promotes that very energetically is Greenville, South Carolina. And if you go down there, you, you can't help but see where everything emanates from, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This has been very informative. Like I said, we're getting together as a board within a week or two on all the boards and committees. And so I really do appreciate you coming and taking time.
Yes, sir.
And sharing this with us, so thank you.
Absolutely. See you guys at Provisions.
Send me the soup menu, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's it for the, the work session, so we'll at this point adjourn until 6:30 for the regular meeting.